Call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the March 4th, 2025 Post Falls City Council meeting. Shannon, please note that all council members are present. And we do have an announce, a couple of announcements, and a proclamation and a presentation. The Parks and Recreation Spring Arts and Craft Fair is this weekend. New this year, an art show will take place on Friday, followed by the craft fair on Saturday. Explore a variety of local handmade goods and artwork. For details, visit postfalls.gov. And I would also like to congratulate, first of all, the Post Falls High School Wrestling Team who won the state championship. I think it was their, it's been a long time since they won, like two years or three years or something. They, it was, they were a fixture on the podium, winning first place, and they won it again this year, this past weekend, so congratulations to them. And one of our own, Ms. Carrie Thorson, was awarded the Post Falls Chamber of Commerce Heritage Award winner for the 2025. And Carrie, they said you've, you've participated for over forty decades, and it's tough to do when you're only forty-three. Congratulations, very well deserved. For those that don't know, I say Carrie was one of our own because she's been, not only been involved in everything, but she's also a city councilman for many, many years, so thank you very much. And we do have a proclamation.
Mayor, do you want to mention that the public hearing is off?
No. Yes, I do. I was just kidding, I actually wrote it down, but if anybody who's here for the public hearing, which is item 2B, the Gabriel Estates Zone Change, that meeting has been canceled as requested of the applicant. And I was going to mention that under the amendments to the agenda too, so just to get in the record. Red Cross, whereas in congruence with the tradition of recognizing and celebrating the service provided to the people of the United States of America by the American Red Cross, which was instituted by President Franklin D. Roosevelt nineteen, in 1943, and continues by our nation's leaders today. And whereas this generous spirit is woven into the fabric of our community, it advances humanitarian legacy of American Red Cross and founder, the founder Clara Barton, one of the most honored women in our country's history, who nobly dedicated herself to alleviating suffering. And whereas the American Red Cross has been serving the greater inland northwest through kind-hearted individuals in our community to provide a beacon of hope for our neighbors in need. Through their voluntary and self, selfless contributions, they make a life-saving difference in people's darkest hours, whether it's delivering shelter, food, and comfort during disasters, providing critical blood donations for hospital patients, supporting military families, veterans, and caregivers through the unique challenges of service, saving lives with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or deli, or delivering aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by global crisis. And whereas the American Red Cross, through its dedicated network of volunteers, donors, and partners, will continue to respond to challenges at home and abroad with compassion and generosity, ensuring that help and hope is available to all who turn to the American Red Cross during their time of need. And now therefore, I, Ronald G. Jacobson, Mayor of City of Post Falls, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of Post Falls, do hereby proclaim March 25th as Red Cross Month. I encourage all citizens of Post Falls to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. And I see a few folks from Red Cross, so thank you very much for all you do. Next item up is the 2024 Urban Renewal Agency Annual Report. Shen? Do they want the proclamation?
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, City Councilors. This annual report is required under Idaho Code Title 50-20, Urban Renewal Law, Chapter 2006, Paragraph 5, Section C. The purpose is to report activities for the preceding calendar year to the City Council by March 31st annually. The financial information required as part of the annual report documentation is available in both the City Clerk's office and the agency office, as well as on our website, www.pfura.com. The agency was created in 1991 and occupies office space in the Chamber of Commerce Building on the second floor. Our 2024 officers were Jamie Davis, Chairman, Christie Fleishman, Vice Chair, and Lynn Crosby, Treasurer. Monthly commission meetings are held on the third Thursday of each month here in the City Hall Council Chambers. Most of the agency's activities fall under, fall, under one of three committees. The Finance and Policy Committee chaired by Lynn Crosby, the District Review Committee chaired by Christie Fleishman, and the Communication Property and Personnel Committee chaired by Eric Clemenson. And we hold workshops as needed, or schedule them as needed. Mission statement of the agency is to encourage sound economic development or community, economic and community improvement that enhances the quality of life in Post Falls by providing and improving infrastructure, attracting, excuse me, attracting jobs. Happy fingers here. And enhancing citizen safety and health. Our current urban renewal districts are shown on this map, their locations and names with the districts of having 2024 activity. It's important to understand that district proponents build public infrastructure and pay for it upfront. The risk lies solely on them to bring in new businesses and expand the community's tax base, which results in additional property value and tax increment. Increment collected by the county is remitted on a monthly basis to the agency, and we reimburse proponents and participants semi-annually in February and August. Here's a map showing the agency's seven closed urban renewal districts. This map provides a clear view of how the City of Post Falls and the Urban Renewal Agency have effectively utilized the program to promote sound economic and community improvement in mostly commercial and industrial areas during the past three decades of growth. In our closed districts, the urban renewal funded improvement cost have totaled $68.4 million. Total district property valuation increase due to development during the term of these districts was $1.08 billion, equating to over $2.64 million in funds to the City of Post Falls, which continues annually as part of the city's expanded property tax base after urban renewal districts close. When a district has remaining tax increment funds at closure, the surplus, surplus is rebated to the taxing districts, which include the City of Post Falls, Kootenay County, Kootenay Fire Rescue, the Community Library Network, North Idaho College, Kootenay EMS, Post Falls Highway District, and School District 273. When these urban renewal districts closed, rebates totaling, or rebates of unexpended funds totaling over $2.23 million were returned to the taxing districts. Historically, the agency has been proactive to return unobligated tax increment funds to the taxing districts during the term of an urban renewal district. In the East Post Falls District in 2009 and 2012, funds totaling $5.5 million were rebated to these districts. Development continuing to take place after district closures provides for increased tax revenue possibilities into the future for each of these taxing districts. District proponents, participants in both the Downtown and Post Falls Technology Districts have completed at their expense approved remediation and public infrastructure projects. The Post Falls Technology District proponent, Beyond Green Incorporated, is currently preparing a request for reimbursement of public infrastructure construction costs. In the Downtown District, the Urban Renewal Commission approved the reimbursement of public infrastructure costs and remediation costs totaling $6,35,000, $35,511 in February of '24. Fiscal year '24 reimbursements in the Downtown District resulted in an end-of-fiscal-year obligation balance of $4,986,820. And in the Pleasant View District, there has not been any activity to report. Urban renewal-related activity in the Post Falls Technology District during 2024 consisted of the construction by the district proponent, Beyond Green, of the Prairie Avenue and Zorros Road roundabout, as well as the initial construction of Wright's Way within the Prairie Crossing shop, shopping subdivision. Costs related to the construction of these public improvements have yet to be submitted to the agency by the district proponent. Several building permits for sites within the Prairie Crossing Shopping Center are in process with the city, and we anticipate building construct, construction to occur or to begin in 2025. For the Downtown District, on February 15th, 2024, the commission granted an order of approval for reimbursement of costs in the Millworks and North Mill One project area. Throughout 2024, construction continued to progress in the areas of Phase C, which is the orange area to the left of the exhibit. Apologize for it being so, so light. And then in Phase F, which is the yellow portion of the development in the center. Semi-annual reimbursements occurring in February and August per agency policy totaled $1,048,691 in the Downtown District. This slide shows a three-year comparison of tax increment received during the calendar year by each district. The 2024 decrease in annual total increment is simply due to the closure of the Center Point and East Post Falls U R Ds. The increment previously associated with these closed districts is now going to the underlying tax districts, including the city. The Post Falls Tac and Downtown Districts are continuing to experience healthy tax increment growth as a result of new development expanding the tax base in each district. Here are a few highlights between fiscal years '23 and '24. Our increment revenue decreased substantially as increment remittances in the closed Center Point and East Post Falls districts terminated. However, the active urban renewal districts have, or continue to have increasing annual tax increment remittances. Interest revenue decreased a small amount as district expenses reimbursements reduced the agency's capital improvements fund balance from March 24th onward. Cash assets increased as tax increment remittances exceeded district expenses. Loan liabilities remain zero as the agency has not taken on any debt after the early payoff of the Greens Ferry overpass in 2021. Proponent obligations came back into play in 2024 as the commission approved project costs for reimbursement in the Downtown District. Our approved operating budget decreased as administration fee revenue went down due to district closures. And our actual operating expenses increased a small amount due to rising costs associated with the agency's audit, employee compensation, insurance, and replacement of some computer hardware. Our minor projects program was approved in October. It's created to address needs voiced by small business property owners in our community. Provides for up to $250,000 of funding assistance per applicant. It's available to existing businesses or nonprofits that have a physical facility within the district that they wish to expand or improve. Funds are restricted to qualifying physical improvements, including those required by the city, such as curbing gutters, sidewalks, grassy swells, stormwater abatement, public sewer extensions, water extensions, landscaping elements, a variety of other things that are available or detailed in our agency policy number seven, reimbursement from tax increment. Finally, on behalf of the Urban Renewal Commission, I'd like to thank you, the city, city staff, and administration for their, your dedicated work and cooperation with the agency throughout the year. And thank the mayor, as well as the council, for your willingness to work in partnership with the commission and your recognition that urban renewal and tax increment financing are effective tools available for economic development and attracting businesses, promoting job creation, and encouraging beneficial development when implemented with well-considered, well-considered district plans, effective coordination between the city, the agency, and our local development community. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. We have another commissioner in attendance, Melissa Jeltnice. Thank you for showing up tonight. I'd like to thank all the commissioners. I know you folks put a lot of time into the Urban Renewal Agency. I was, while you were talking, I was thinking, years ago, many years ago, I was in Boise at a Association of Idaho Cities workshop, and one of the breakout sessions was on urban renewal. And I showed up and they asked why I chose to attend that one. I said, because we're going to be closing out our first district, and I want advice on how to do it. And the response from the attorney that was heading it up said, you're the first city to close out an urban renewal district, so we were all, we are all looking to Post Falls as to how to do it. So since then, the city and urban, Post Falls Urban Renewal has closed out seven districts. Even, I've had many people who are not fans of urban renewal, and they said, but if urban renewal is done properly, it's because it's in Post Falls. So I want to thank you for your efforts and all the commissioners, efforts on all the past commissioners. It served us well. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Other than the removal of Section 2B, public hearings on the Gabriel Estates, are there any other amendments to the agenda tonight?
We have none tonight, sir.
Are there any declarations of conflict, ex parte contacts, or site visits?
None.
Seeing none, would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the February 18th, 2025 meeting. Item B is minutes, February 19th, 2025, special city council workshop. Item C is payables, 219 through 35, 2025. Item D is Bogie Subdivision Master Development Agreement, S U B D dash 24 dash 1. Item E is Long Range Financial Planning Agreement with FCS. And item F is a department head recruitment contract with Prothman.
I did have one question on item F. We were talking, when I went through it, I couldn't remember what the projected estimated cost was during the workshop we had, but I saw a couple of different amounts, one for seventeen-five or somewhere in there, and one for twenty-five thousand.
Yes, on item F, the full fee is seventeen thousand five hundred. It does have a not-to-exceed of twenty-five thousand. That includes reimbursables, which are up to and including trade, train journal, I can't talk, trade journals of eight to twelve hundred, direct announcements for nineteen hundred, final packets to each of the individual candidates, which can run from one fifty to five hundred, background checks for a hundred and eighty-five, and then travel would be about nine hundred and fifty per trip. But those additional amounts could only go up to twenty-five thousand.
Good. Thank you very much. Any other questions on the consent?
I would move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second. Motion seconds for the discussion. Roll call, please.
Davis?
Aye.
Westlin?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Malloy?
Aye.
Plou?
Aye.
Sticklater?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item up tonight is public hearings, and we have one, Warren Field Park Vacation File Number VAC-24-2. Open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council President Malloy, and other members of City Council. John Manley here, planning manager at City Post Falls, introducing the Warren Field Park Vacation. The owner of the land is the City Post Falls. The request is coming from the Post Falls Park Division. They're requesting to vacate twenty feet of right-of-way that runs through the center of the Warren Field Park. And to be clear, there may have been some confusion that we're not adding an alley to this park. It's to actually remove the possibility of putting an alley in. The location of the existing right-of-way out there is, as you see here in the red. It's just west of Idaho Street, in between East Second and north of East First, and the alley's running from east to west. Here's a little more zoomed-in image of the site itself, highlighted with the red box, with the proposed vacation being highlighted there in green. What this will do is it'll allow the site to be planned holistically as one site with really no divisions. The parks looking at it is to help clean up the site, allowing them to programmatically plan for that a little bit easier, dealing with some setback issues that could arise from planning. Staff looked at it, and they have, we have no concerns with the proposal and the vacation. Here's who was notified. Here's the responses. YPL, they don't have utilities in the area, and DEQ say they have no environmental concerns. So that pretty much wraps up the proposal here for vacation.
John, quick question for you. With this, I know this is vacation, and maybe it's not appropriate, but will parking be addressed throughout this whole process? This is the vacation piece, but with the park itself, can we address the parking, or will staff be addressing the parking?
Yeah, there's a separate project going alongside us. I haven't been intimately involved with that parking. I know, I believe Warren's been a part of it, and Bob Seal has been a part of it as far, and Dave Fair as far as creating a improvement plan for doing improvements around the entire project, and I don't know when that's supposed to commence.
And I didn't mean to insert that into the right-of-way vacation, but I just, I noticed there's all sorts of folks that are parking there as if it's their parking lot, so hopefully that'll be addressed, but thank you. Any other questions, John? Anyone wishing to speak?
We have none.
You're over there. Used to be. And I'm sure you're probably not going to rebut, John?
No.
I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, how'd you like that?
I'd move to approve the Warren Field Park Vacation File Number VAC-24-2.
Second. Motion seconds, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Westlin?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Plou?
Aye.
Sticklater?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. And, and a change-up in tonight's agenda, we are going to adjourn for a executive session, not to last longer than...
Let's call it ten minutes.
Ten minutes?
Move to enter an executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74-2061F, to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss the legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated but imminently likely to be litigated. Further, that no action will be taken during the session, and the session will last approximately ten minutes.
Second. Motion second. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Plou?
Aye.
Sticklater?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Westlin?
Aye.
Zigla-
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. We'll be back in ten minutes. Thanks. (end of transcript)
Welch Comer to add the additional design and construction services. That information was used by the contractor to develop a change proposal. And ultimately, that contract change order was authorized and executed in August. This slide is a last minute addition. This was not included in your council packet. However, this was important information to include tonight to bridge between the previous slide. And my next slides involving the financial piece. So following August twenty twenty four and that executed change order, there were some changes that were required to the traffic control plan. That required the contractor to resequence their work, which had a direct impact on the timing and ability for them to to complete all the work, including this additional paving. Around October Interstate expressed some concerns about their ability in completing the the work as contracted prior to the winter season. That led to some discussions with ITD Interstate and the city, which ultimately led to a change order that incorporated a winter shutdown of the project, addressed ITD's concerns for some very significant poor pavement condition within this section that we're talking about. So that involved some interim patching that was completed in October. And then also built into that change order was that we would add additional time needed for the contractor to come back and complete the work this spring. So the first item, this is item A. This is a contract amendment with Welch Comer. This is a increase of forty five thousand dollars. And this accounts for the additional time needed to complete the work, as well as replacing some of the some of their time spent coordinating and oversight of the patching work. The resultant cost or total cost for engineering related services for this scope of work is one hundred and thirty five thousand, also included the updated contract total for all engineering, construction, support services. So this that three hundred nine thousand incorporates the red and the blue area. The city is now managing the blue portion of the project for ITD. Staff is requesting a five thousand dollar contingency. So that brings the total request for this item to fifty thousand. The second item, this is item B. This is a replacement of the contract contingency with Interstate. So that interim patching included an increase of about thirty seven thousand to perform that work. The request this evening is a replacement of the contingency. So that thirty six thousand, the previously council approved contingency was used to fund that work. And that was authorized by the Public Works Director at that time. Replacing the contingency reflects the updated contract value and the remaining work. So total request for this item is forty six thousand. Bringing all of the contract values and the contingencies together, I wanted to present this slide. So you'll note that the the two items I just discussed are reflected in the total value, so six hundred and just over six hundred and forty four thousand. This is contracted values and the contingencies. This is within the seven hundred thousand lump sum payment from ITD. One more slide. I thought it would be beneficial to show both projects and where we sit with the contracted value. So this these numbers illustrate the value without the contingency. So to date, we are around six hundred thousand dollars for contracted project work for the District One portion. It's shown in red on this slide. And then for the cities portion of the project, we're about one point one five million. Worth noting that the grant award, the street strategic initiatives grant was awarded an amount of one point one seven. So we're tracking about twenty thousand under that. A little bit of project update and information moving forward. So the contractor plans to move back to the site April seventh. They'll begin contract work. We're expected to have the project completed by May twenty eighth. We can expect much of the same as last season. There will be some intermittent ramp closures, some impacts of traffic. For the most part, traffic will be maintained through north and south through that corridor. The contractor is taking a inside lane, outside lane approach, so two different phases. And then there will be some closures and some night work to address the areas around the I ninety ramps. We are coordinating with ITD directly, as well as the Highway Forty One and I ninety interchange project to ensure we have we are maintaining access and appropriate detours. Most of the work will occur during the day. There is some night nighttime work anticipated. And then we are continuing to move forward with our public involvement as we did with the work last season. So we are reaching out directly to the businesses. We will be doing that in the coming weeks, as well as posting to the city's social media outlets and city's website. So additional street repair. I have three more slides, and I'll bring this full circle, how this relates to Spokane Street project. What you're looking at is the roundabout at Spokane Street and Poline Avenue. It was recently brought to staff's attention through our Streets Division that this is in need of some pavement rehabilitation. The picture that I added on the screen there shows some of the cracking that we're seeing throughout the roundabout, which is indicative of a more pervasive problem underneath the asphalt. You know, in talking with staff, this is the pavement rehabilitation. This type of rehabilitation is often performed in-house annually. Our Streets Crew repairs patches throughout the city. However, given the likely scope and magnitude of this work, this appears to be best served as a contracted project. So working through a contractor to bid this work, perform this. It also led to some conversations about a potential for a change order to be added into the Spokane Street project with contractor currently working in the area. Moving forward, we've reached out to Welch Comer to develop a amendment that would allow for some basic design and then providing that information to the contractor to provide a cost proposal. So immediate next steps. We will resume work starting early April, working with Welch Comer to develop an amendment. In fact, we've received that earlier this week. Our intent would be to bring that back at the March eighteenth council. One item to note on that, that adding that work would allow us to utilize any remaining grant funds. So currently, we are tracking under that grant, that grant award. We could apply these funds to this additional roundabout work. If we are not able to negotiate a change order with the contract with the contractor, we can use the design contract documents and bid this or pursue this as a standalone or separate project. So it provides some options there. One last thing, I am more than happy to provide a full presentation similar to what I've done this evening for that item at the next council meeting. Alternatively, if you feel you would have enough information to make a decision, I could include that as a consent agenda item and be available for questions. Again, I'm happy to provide a full presentation, but as part of the question slide, I will leave that up for discussion.
Andrew, the first question I had was on the first part with the additional costs. If that was something that would be covered by the ITD funding, and it sounds like it will be.
Correct.
So to fall within that seven hundred thousand. My next question is going to be on the roundabout. Was that a project that was done properly? I mean, is why is it failing so so soon? Because that roundabout's not that old.
Believe that roundabout was constructed in two thousand nine.
Are you kidding me? Two thousand nine?
I thought it was newer than that, too.
That is the that is the date.
I'm sorry. I think I would have guessed two thousand eighteen.
Yeah, the so we have as-built drawings. That was a design project that may have been work completed through the Streets Crew at that time, through the Streets Division. That roundabout, as you likely know, sees a lot of traffic. And that is somewhat normal wear and tear. And needing to address that at this point would allow.
Two thousand nine, I would agree. I I seriously thought it was no more than five or six years old.
Yeah, and worth noting, when we rehabilitate it, that it will be rebuilt to the arterial standard, which it was designed to originally.
Anybody else have questions, Ben?
Questions just on the numbers on it. You're saying at current project scope, without the roundabout, we're at one point one five and the grant is one point one seven?
Correct.
So you're anticipating that the addition of the roundabout would still basically be covered by that grant, twenty thousand dollars?
I skipped over a an important piece here. So this adding this work allows us to use all of the grant funds separately. We have budgeted and we have funds available to fund this roundabout rehabilitation on its own. So we have street reconstruction maintenance funds available. We will utilize whatever grant funds are left and remaining, any remaining balance owed or.
Be covered by.
By city funds through the Streets Department.
And that would come before us for approval for that?
Correct.
Okay.
So the next steps would be a contract amendment with Welch Comer for for Welch Comer to develop a design. That would be taken to the contractor to develop a cost. At that point, once we have a cost and if we were to move forward in bringing that to council for approval, we would include where that funding source is coming from, as well as the contract amendment. I guess that that would also outline in the council memo where the the funds are coming from for that work. Gotcha. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'd say it sounds probably complex enough to have a short separate presentation on that rather than a consent calendar.
That sounds great. I, as I was explaining that, I was thinking maybe this is better served as a presentation. I appreciate that feedback.
You do need a motion tonight, though.
Doable, right?
Yeah, okay.
I move to approve the Spokane Street Rehabilitation Contract Amendment with Welch Comer Engineers.
Second. Motion second for the discussion. Roll call, please.
Lou?
Aye.
Sig leader?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Westlin?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
I move to approve the Spokane Street Rehabilitation Contract Contingency with Interstate Concrete and Asphalt.
Second.
Motion seconds for the discussion. Roll call, please.
Sig leader?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Westlin?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Thanks, Andrew. Next item up tonight is the City of Post Falls Parade Code. Charlie?
Good evening. How are you? I always want to look up there instead of looking at the computer, which makes it easier. So first, I have two wingmen here with me tonight. One, if you have questions on the specific ordinance itself, Field will be my wingman on that. Also, in the audience, we have past Council President Carrie Thorson here. She has been involved with the parade for more years than she probably wants to admit to. And so if we have specific questions about the parade, she could also assist if if you guys are. Normally, we don't take public comment, but she is here to help us if we need it. As you saw, there were a few comments in today's paper regarding the parade. I would say that probably my slide is not accurate. And this is the slide that came from May seventh. I mean, I'm May seventh, twenty twenty four. So I said current parade practices. This is what has been historic parade practices. And so we've had one parade. It's under the Post Falls Festival. Prior to that, it was called the Post Falls, Post Falls Days. And the Post Falls Community Ambassadors have been hosting that parade for about the last ten years. Prior to that, the Chamber had hosted the parade. And the Chamber has assisted with accepting applications again up through at least last year. I don't know about this year, but through last year, they have done that. So the Post Falls Chamber received the applica- oh, I'm sorry. The Post Falls Community Ambassadors would receive the applications from the Chamber, and they also would receive the sponsor fees. Last year, those fees were about eleven hundred dollars for the applications. I don't know what the sponsor fees were. And City in the past, with the exception of last year, provided the traffic management, security, assistance with planning golf carts, clipboards, cones, and sandwich boards. And so on May seventh, we had brought a presentation to council to talk about whether or not we should continue and also to consider the request from Post Falls Community Ambassadors for support from the city. In that presentation on May seventh, we had talked about that the current practice is not sustainable. So there were estimated costs, and this was primarily looking at streets and a police department. It was about eleven thousand dollars in personnel costs. That didn't look at any of the costs associated with providing equipment, the cones, any of that kind of stuff. Dave Ferr and I were talking this morning, and also it didn't envision any of the assistance that comes from the Park and Rec Department with the parade. And they are providing assistance throughout the festival. So we didn't include any of those dollars in that eleven thousand. And May seventh, one of the things that came out of the the conversation with council was that the council was continuing to be supportive of the parade, but they wanted it not at the same level that we had supported it in the past. So for us to look at what was out there for other parades, we had included in the packet, I think Lewiston, Sandpoint, Spokane, Moscow, some of those particular policies. And Cord Lane had a draft policy. It looks like they still haven't adopted the new policy. So they're still operating under their two thousand and eighteen parade policy. They have an agreement with their Downtown Association. So they have an MOU with the Downtown Association. The Downtown Association provides things like the traffic management and pays a fee to the City of Cord Lane for the various parades that they're in charge of down on Sherman. The Saint Patrick's Day Parade, the Fourth of July Parade. I believe even the holiday parade that they have over the weekend of Thanksgiving, that is under the Downtown Association. They are the host of that parade. The other thing that was kind of desired was for there to be a formal policy. So if others are considering parades, we have a formal policy on what it is that the city will participate in and what would need to be participated or supplied by the host. Ensures safety of the citizens, participants, and city staff. I know that is concern for our Public Safety Department to make sure that everybody is safe that attends the parade. Also, again, it was just that reducing the dependency on city staff. Before I go into the proposed ordinance highlights, I did want to mention that within the letter that was received from the Post Falls Community Ambassadors, they used the terminology that they had found out about this in in offhand or secondhand manner. I did engage with the Post Falls Chamber Executive Director. She had told me she was in contact with the Post Falls Community Ambassadors about this year's parade. I asked her to notify. So on February twenty first, I said, would you please notify the Post Falls Community Ambassadors that we have a draft ordinance that we're working on, should be ready today? And so that they know that we're going to hear and talk about this draft ordinance on March fourth. Christina did notify Mr. Hoag, and Mr. Hoag reached out to me within an hour and asked for the ordinance. And I supplied him with the ordinance, again, letting him know it was. And I even told him, I said, this is a draft agenda item with a draft ordinance. The council has not seen this and will not see this for one more week. They will not receive it till February twenty eighth. And so I I did direct that he be notified. Apparently, he did not understand that that was under my direction. So just a clarification in the future, I won't ask somebody who is secondary from the city to notify another member in that way. Again, he he received the ordinance on the morning or afternoon of probably around noon, I would guess, because you completed the ordinance the morning of the twenty first. That ordinance was forwarded to him. I also had sent the draft ordinance on twenty seventh to Carrie Thorson, who her and I had engaged in conversation at the Chamber event last Wednesday. So Mr. Hoag had received the draft ordinance eleven days prior to this event tonight to talk about it. I did not hear anything back from Mr. Hoag at that time. Within the newspaper article, and it's also clarified in the letter, they had mentioned that one of the concerns was it needing to apply for a permit. That's already within our current regulations. They apply for a special use permit. And also, they are required to apply through the nonprofit application funding. The, let me say that, it's an external and nonprofit funding application. So they were required to fill that out last year. So that process is already in place. This would just replace it with a parade permit application and not a special event per permit application. Unprecedented regulations. Again, we're not trying to stop the parade. We're just trying to make all regulations clear. So we have invited them to meet with us directly to help us understand what they consider to be unprecedented regulations. Lack of city support, I I just would reiterate again, the city supports the parade. And then increased in burden on volunteers. There are a number of parades that go on through the various agencies that we've looked at. We modeled this after some of those. This actual ordinance is less burdensome than what or less regulated than many of those were. And so the need for professionals and the need for volunteers is a is a mix. And usually, the host of the parade would do that. So again, in Cord Lane, you look at the traffic management. I believe they still they hire that out to a professional. And yet they have volunteers that are helping with the making sure that kids don't run out in front of buses and things like that. Here, we do throw candy, so that is a greater concern that it is in Cord Lane, making sure that the kids stay not underneath the or in front of the vehicles or running out. And I've I've been to this parade a number of times. It does happen. I think we do a good job of making sure that the safety is followed. Any questions so far? If not, I will go into just kind of the ordinance highlights. So again, the applicant must apply for a required parade permit. So a developed, a fully developed plan must go from start to finish. That should be pretty easy since we've been doing this for a long time. Date and time of the parade must be established. The route must be established. Approximate size of the parade is requested. And they must submit for the traffic management control plan. This includes street closure applications, which is filed with the Highway District or ITD. I can't remember for SALTIS. It's one of those two that actually receives the street closure. Certificate of Insurance, again, they've been doing that, and then a home hold harmless agreement for the city. Any questions?
Can you go back to the previous slide?
Let me see here.
Could you just highlight for me what has what would be different when they when the parade planning comes around this year versus last year? I know there was like traffic control is is something that we wouldn't have as the police department supporting that. They'd have to self-support that.
That's correct. So really, this is what we did last year, but in prior years. The the police department would have met with the Post Falls Community Ambassadors and helped to develop the plan and put together the traffic management control plan and the route. Also, the order of, I guess, the order of the participants in the parade was discussed at that meeting. And so they would go through how they were going to arrange the folks going through the parade. So if you were ground force and you had the large vehicle, that they would say that's applicant, parade participant number fifteen. And so they would try to make sure that there was good order in how long it takes certain folks to travel through the parade route so that you didn't have big gaps.
Okay.
And so they would do that part also. But other than that, the the rest is kind of the same. I want to, I'll go back to the street closure thing. We were filling that out and and legal reviewed that last year and said that you have to actually be part of the Post Falls Community Ambassador's Board in order to fill that out. So the chief of police had signed for it in twenty twenty three. It wasn't legal for him to sign for it. So.
So the the real, I'm trying to get to the bottom of the real gripe from Mr. Hoag and Community Ambassadors. It's more costs. They say they're going to need more volunteers. I'm just looking at like CDA versus Post Falls, right? The CDA parades largely benefit the Downtown Association. The Post Falls Parade largely benefits our city and its citizens. So I'm just, I I just want to clarify all that stuff. I don't want the city to have an undue burden, an unfair burden, but also the city has more of a vested interest than than CDA's parades typically do, because the Downtown Association wants tourists to come. So they have fun things that they plan all the time.
And that's that's pretty much what we heard from the council here last time was we want to continue to support the parade, but not at the same level we've been supporting it in the past. And so this balanced having them take over the traffic management control plan. It sounds like that is something that the Post Falls Community Ambassadors would like to see the continued continued support from the city. I would, just from staff's perspective, I think we'd rather see additional sponsorships and actually have that professionally paid for than having our staff do that.
And at the time this came up, our officers were working twelve-hour shifts, and it was a big burden.
Sure.
So.
Also, it seems like the parade route's pretty much the same every year. So you do the traffic plan once and just copy paste, right?
Yes, that that's true. So the only thing they're doing is looking at the order of the participants, which I don't think that that from from what I've read, I don't believe that's an issue with the Post Falls ambassadors doing the the how to have the people lined up within the parade.
Samantha?
Pardon my ignorance, but a traffic management control plan, like you would hire like a private company? And you just say, we want to do a parade on this street? And then they like give you a packet back that tells you what that is, or maybe it's?
So you would also have those individuals like at your intersections? And it would help make sure that traffic was blocked off for those intersections? And you wouldn't have cars coming into the parade route that were from an outside source?
But just to submit the application, then whoever is wanting to do a parade would need to engage this some sort of like private company that specializes in that?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry, wait, Samantha, if you have another.
But then how it was done previously is that the city staff, probably mostly the police department, created that plan.
City and streets, yes.
City and, yes, streets, sorry. Okay, okay, thank you.
Andrew, were you done with your questions?
I am.
Joe, do you have any questions?
No.
Ryan?
I just had a question. Have you had a chance to look at the MOU between Downtown Association and the City of Cord Lane?
So I received that this afternoon, and I spent about ten minutes looking at it. So I have not thoroughly gone through the entire document to see exactly what they're doing.
I'm just wondering if there's a potential for it being applicable between us and volunteers as well.
I, yes, I, again, this is a conversation to have with council to see how you guys feel about this and any changes that you would like to see us make to it. It sounds like the Post Falls Community Volunteers would like a meeting with us. I haven't heard back from the letter I sent out today, but I would assume they do from the first letter we received.
Randy?
Do we know what the additional cost burden would be on them for hosting the parade under a a new set of rules like this versus what it has been in the past?
I have not seen that. We requested that information last year. I did not see a response back to it. I did see in this year, as they said, that the the traffic control company they hired was like twenty five hundred, and then they used the guard to come up and assist.
Okay. And and you had mentioned before that we had supplied golf carts and and boards and signs and other things. Is that something we would no longer be doing under the draft ordinance here?
We would no longer be doing that. And it sounds like in in conversations with Ms. Thorson, that that wasn't done prior to the Post Falls Community Ambassadors taking on the parade. So when the Chamber was doing it, we didn't supply those.
Okay, well, a thought I had is that sometimes it's maybe a lot more money to go hire some third party to come in for a particular thing. But if we have the capacity, we might be able to do it at cost cheaper than hiring a third party. And we could have some mechanism where, depending on budget and time constraints and staffing, we could have an option to provide, you know, more than kind of the bare minimum and then have sort of flexibility with that to see how much we are able to do. And then they can choose, you know, maybe they can work with us. Or failing that, they're ultimately responsible if we don't have the capacity to help.
Correct. And I can't remember. It's either Lewiston or Moscow has that option within their their parade codes where you can pay to hire their officers and their street crew to come in and assist.
You okay?
Yeah, I would disagree that we probably would need some real numbers on what kind of costs there would be incurring, you know, with this change. On its face, I do support the ordinance, just simply because something that is this much more clear that everybody can follow, especially moving forward as our city grows. You know, right now, we're only at one parade, but if we have another one come in, that's more cost that we would probably incur to cover those typical or same services that we that we provide. So I I think that's my biggest question in all of this, when we have a you know, kind of, kind of a using hyperbole to make a point in the letter of his, you know, we're incurring all these costs and these huge regulations. I just have a kind of some vague idea of what that means. So to have some real numbers of like, okay, you know.
And I could reach out to Emily from the Downtown Association in Cord Lane, too. And because they did not use a full support system last time. They used the guard and and then hired out the traffic management control, I think, just to write the plan. And that was the twenty five hundred. But she might be able to provide me what the costs are in Cord Lane for a full plan plus support to give me an estimate, because I don't know that I I'll check with the Post Falls Community Ambassadors, but I don't know if they know that number.
Okay. My other question on this would be, if we are changing this ordinance to what seems to me kind of pulling all of our city support from the parade festival, then how are we supporting it? Like, like we say, you know, we still want to support the parade and make sure that it keeps going at the same time pulling out what seems like all of our resources from it. So is there a medium middle middle ground that we can find in that? So is there a medium, middle, middle ground that we can find in that supporting the parade?
So we'll still have officers at the parade. They just won't be doing traffic, um, control. They would be doing safety. And so I'm not, Chief, can you say, how many officers did you have there last year?
We had twenty-four officers there last year. Not last year. Last year we had, uh, ten, I think it was.
Ten officers. And John, we also had a few street, um, folks that were there.
Last year our crews delivered the.
Are they still delivering the cones? Okay.
So the city still participates?
And so, and then Post Falls, and then Park and Rec would still, um, provide their support.
Okay.
More generally, Shelley, sorry. Thought we were just gonna ask questions about this slide, but since we just kind of broke it open. I'm wondering if.
I can move it to the next slide, which is really just talking about next steps, so.
Um, what I was hoping to ask for in this ordinance was some sort of clause or extra sentence that would allow the city to either decrease, I mean, we're not charging, but if we had extra money in the budget or if city council felt that it was appropriate, we could award some sort of help.
So I can take that one.
Oh, I wasn't done yet.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, okay. Um, like to potentially help if we thought that it was something, um, that we could, that we wanted to support to, I think, Councilor Ziegler's point to actually show that it's something that's beneficial to the community. So potentially having a clause in there to allow city council to make that motion or, or show that support. And then also, um, more broadly, not just speaking of the, the parades. I mean, it's a bigger ordinance, right? So I was more concerned with like the content of these events and what they're being held for. If there was any provision that we could put in the ordinance to have either like a mayoral review, so that we could say at some point, if we wanted to, this is an event that the city and city council wants to support or for whatever reason, do not want to support the application. So.
Are you talking about support and, and approval or support and, and financial?
Support and the first one, financial, second one, approval.
Okay.
So on the financial side of things, we do have the, uh, funding for external and nonprofit agency policy. So they, they could submit, which is what they did last year. They could submit for, um, additional funding, um, through that policy.
And they could like show what the traffic control cost was or whatever. And we could say, okay, okay, great. I like that. Thanks.
Um, and then the, the second one, um, we would, we would need to be very careful and not, um, sort of regulating what, um, what particular permits came in request as far as, uh, once we get into that business of determining, well, that these people can, uh, have a parade and these people can't, that, that gets us into some murky areas. And so I would recommend against doing that.
I actually lived that world a little bit back when I worked for Coeur d'Alene. There used to be some parades in Coeur d'Alene that you may not want to support. And, um, you quickly get yourself into legal hot water, making regulations based on content of the parade. There's free speech rights, even so far as if you try to charge extra insurance based on the concern of counter protesters showing up, that probably treads on the free speech rights of the organizers of the parade. So you have to be very, very careful. It's a place that typically we do not do content-based regulation of speech. And this could be speech, probably is, frankly, it is speech.
I, I guess the only thing I would say is, the city would definitely be willing to, to work with, uh, in this particular case, ambassadors or the cheers. But I want everybody to know, this isn't the first time this has come up. So years ago, Ironman was in town. And Ironman, the marathon was run through Post Falls. And the volunteers, police department did tremendous job setting up, they, they set plywood over the railroad trusses so they could run on a flat surface. And I remember, uh, Chief Hayes and I think it was probably Captain Hoag at the time came to council and said, we're, we're not doing this unless we can get reimbursed for our expenses. Now, I understand it's a little bit different because they're for-profit, Ironman, and this is a nonprofit. But the, the point to me is, we're still asking our law enforcement officers to provide this coverage. And if we're doing that, there should be some type of, uh, cost recovery for the city so we can make sure that we can pay them. Or if we've got funds available in a, like a better term discretionary or nonprofit fund, to be able to give that, uh, apply that to it. But it, again, it's not the first time that coverage on these types of things has, has been an issue because of the costs associated with it. So. But I'm, personally, I would be all in favor of work with them to, uh, to get things done. I don't see it as a huge change. Uh, the issue came up last year. There was negotiation, discussion, back and forth. The parade was on, the parade was off, the parade was back on. It did come together. And I think it's something that should easily be worked out. And hopefully, uh, we'll be able to get to that point.
I, I totally think we can get to that point. So it's just putting the numbers together, deciding what the city wants to support in regards to the parade. And, you know, there, I think there are some different options. The MOU, like Coeur d'Alene has as an option, um, and looking at the costs and, and trying to get some estimates of what those costs are.
Go ahead, Joe.
If I may, we've, we've heard a lot from the city side. I, I wouldn't mind hearing from somebody, Missy Chris and Carrie out there have participated in organizing the parade for many, many years. If you've read the ordinance, would you mind telling us what you think about it and what challenges might, that might bring?
Carrie, have you ever had to stand up at this? Cause you were always back there. So.
My best side to the camera.
Are we gonna make her state her name and address and?
Yeah, for the record, yeah.
Start the timer.
Start the timer.
Short person. Carrie Thorson, two five zero eight Powderhorn Street, Post Falls, Idaho.
Was that fun to say?
What's that?
Was that fun to say from there?
Well, kind of.
Okay.
Okay. I read the ordinance and I, I have absolutely no objections to it. There are a couple of clarifications. From nineteen ninety to two thousand fourteen, the Post Falls Chamber did not sponsor the parade or organize it. Burton, Carrie Thorson and a merry band of volunteers, about a dozen. All of us, every year, Sam Clevenger, Steve Bruno, Skip Hissong. It was a group of people who lived here, who enjoyed each other, who enjoyed each other's company and loved parades. I, Cliff Hayes was the chief of police in nineteen ninety and happened to be a friend. He was actually doing some things that I didn't know I needed to be doing. So after a couple of years, he said, Carrie, you really need to be filling out this thing for ITD, the permitting. But so I filled out all the permits and Burton and I were just talking about it before I came here tonight. Uh, the insurance, Dickinson Insurance. We paid for the insurance that was required by the city, uh, filled out the permitting. So just as private citizens, we, we had no, uh, nonprofit organization. And the Chamber of Commerce, what they did, uh, I paid them about two hundred dollars for the use of their copy machine and their, uh, receptionist who accepted the, um, entry forms. And we had no sponsors. We charged a nominal fee, none to nonprofits, but commercial entries we did. And the money that we made from the entry fees, we paid the expenses, like porta potties, whatever. That parade route has not changed since nineteen ninety. It is the exact same parade route. We had, uh, officers on, uh, Seltice and Frederick, Seventh and Frederick, and at Idaho Street and Seltice for at the end of the parade, when they went around the corner back to Sixth Street. They didn't need to be behind the scenes. We had, oh my gosh, uh, we got our own golf carts. We would get three or four golf carts donated by Prairie Falls. We went up and got them and brought them back. We were on autopilot. There was not profit. We were not raising money for anything. And if there was enough money, if there was enough money left over, we'd go down to the park, uh, afterwards and have a beer. And then the next year, do it again. My point is, when, in two thousand fourteen, after twenty-five years, uh, my husband said he was done. So I knew that he did all the work anyway. So, uh, we left doing that. And that is when the Post Falls Community Ambassadors, under Scott Hoag, who was then the chief of police, and Warren Merritt, who was the fire chief. No one had stepped up. So they created the Post Falls Am, Community Ambassadors. And in that capacity as the chief of police is how I believe, and I, I can't speak for Scott, but, um, Chief McLean was certainly there. I think that's where the city, oh my God, the clipboards, when you said clipboards, that provided clipboards? Are you kidding me? And if you need a clipboard, I've got some. That just, I think that's how that happened. I think that's where the, uh, police department, nobody ever, ever organized the lineup or any of that. Uh, that, not the chamber, not the police department, not the city. That was a parade committee's role to do it. But all these years, nothing has changed. The only thing that has changed is we had a dedicated group of volunteers who were citizens of this community, who came together every year, one day a year to put on a parade. And we didn't need, we appreciated the assistance of the police department. You know, to be at a couple designated corners, but they certainly did not need the kind of involvement that they're expected. I, I was stunned to hear what the police department, um, was doing. So to your, you know, to your thoughts about you love a parade, I love a parade too. Up until a year or so ago, I announced a Coeur d'Alene Fourth of July parade for thirteen years. So I'm kind of familiar with Coeur d'Alene's parades too. It's all about the volunteers. If people like you who love parades, want to see a parade, volunteer. You know, I mean, so that's, that's where I am. Any questions?
So, long story short, you don't think this ordinance is gonna hinder the ability to have a parade?
No, I, it, it's basically the things, I, I did get a kick out of the, uh, the traffic plan because that was always on a legal pad with pencil. Okay, here's where the parade route is. And then, uh, the police department go, okay, yeah, we kind of need somebody here. We paid for the porta potties. We bought clipboards and all of that. But I see nothing in that ordinance. And I appreciate you sending it along. There was nothing in that ordinance that should hinder any group of people who are committed to putting on a parade. And I say, God bless them. But I don't know that you need the city of Post Falls or the city of Coeur d'Alene. Oh, I also announced the Routh Room Parade. So you can ask me about that one too. There just doesn't need to be the level of involvement that is currently, um, being expected of the city of Post Falls.
Thanks, Carrie. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I kind of like being there more than here.
Thanks for your time.
I want to introduce one more infamous person. So sitting just to Carrie's right is Chris Pappas. And for all of our new council members, you probably don't recognize her, but she used to be our city clerk. So she used to sit where Shannon is sitting and she retired and, um, now we have Shannon. There was a, there was a break in between there, but, um, Chris was our city clerk for thirty years. So.
She went through how many mayors, Chris?
Five.
Yeah. And I, I've been mad at you ever since.
Yeah.
Thank you. Counsel, any further discussion on this?
Yeah, I understand the, certainly the city ambassadors, the concerns about costs and complications. Doesn't sound like it's gonna be that much more complicated than before. And also appreciating Ms. Thorson's comments too. It's, you know, things are, are more litigious and liability concerns are higher now than they were in nineteen ninety. Uh, so I think to protect ourselves, um, there needs to be, you know, probably a higher level of, uh, requirements rather than a, a, a traffic control, you know, plan on a, on a, on a napkin. And, you know, it needs to be something official. And I believe that the more the city involves itself, the more that we open ourselves to liability should something go horribly wrong. So, uh, you know, the, the Post Falls Festival Parade has always been run incredibly well. I don't think a traffic plan and mitigation services are too much to ask. And, uh, I think the costs will become less and less of an issue as the city and particularly the downtown area right there continues to grow. I think we'll end up with our own Downtown Association probably sooner than later, that will want the foot traffic and all that sort of stuff. They will, I'm more than happy to throw money at, at the annual parade and probably encourage further parades, uh, beyond that. So we're in kind of a, a flux period right now where we're not quite big enough. We don't have quite enough of a downtown to fully fit it of their own accord. But we're in a, also a very, you know, risk averse, litigious period of time in twenty twenty-five also. So I like the ordinance, especially, we're gonna have eventually more than one parade a year. Uh, there needs to be some sort of standard. I think having a, a, a mechanism that nonprofits can get some funding, but that is still sole and separate from us providing direct support to the parade. Uh, I could be wrong field, but I think that kind of shields us a little bit from some liability of what goes on with the parade. Uh, so I think that's a good option. I think it's, I think it's a good, uh, a good policy and I would support it. And, um, hope that there are enough people who love parades that will support the parade also.
And I would say that I, I personally support the ordinance as well. I don't think it's anything exceptionally different than what we currently have. We're just formalizing it. And, uh, I think as Samantha said, you know, is there an opportunity to work together? Maybe Randy said it, but, you know, let's get the ordinance in place with the understanding that talk to us. You know, I mean, last year was parades on, parades off, parades on, you know, talk to us. Let's, let's work it out and make sure that it happens. And I think that, uh, from my perspective, uh, city would be supportive of that.
Mayor, I think, uh, I think that there was an important comment that was made as well. And that was that there was a lot of people that have worked a long, long time to make this happen. And as those people start to decide that they are gonna retire, they're not gonna be as involved. I think if anything came out of this to anyone that was watching, is that if you are passionate about it, they need to increase those volunteers. So it takes more people getting engaged.
Good point.
I think a kind of similar vein to that thought is, um, you know, in my experience, the, the public and businesses as well in Post Falls are very generous. And so I think when we get the word out more that, hey, this is the direction that, that we're needing to go as a, as a growing city. You know, we not only have, uh, you know, protecting our risk, but the risk profile has increased as our city has grown. So, um, you know, I think everybody would be pretty, pretty understanding of that. And I think, uh, I think the parade can continue to get better and better with this framework in place.
I do want to comment on this downtown area. We do have some of the folks who are helping develop this that have talked with staff about wanting to have more events down here. And I think it includes parades and such. And even for the holidays, there was a question whether or not we could get all of Fourth Street lit, um, for the holidays. It was way too late in the game to, uh, do something like that. And there's some issues with some of the streetlights along Fourth. But there is an interest in seeing more activity in the ways of celebrations here in Post Falls. So trying to put together an ordinance that works for everyone. But it is important that we do this prior to folks starting to plan to have some of these additional events and celebrations.
Shelley, may I ask?
Sure.
Reading some of the comments that were made about the ordinance, could, could you maybe succinctly explain for everybody, and me too, how we need to view the parade, this specific parade, different than the Post Falls Days? As those are two different events that are sponsored by two different groups, right? Like the, I think the comment was made that the city has no problem sponsoring and, and using resources for Post Falls Days. But we're making this ordinance for the parade.
So currently, yes, Post Falls Festival, Post Falls, Post Falls Days. Yeah, I call it Post Falls Days too. Um, that is a city-sponsored event. So we host that. We, um, go out as staff and get sponsorships to help pay for that. We charge for the booths that are downstairs. And I know we've had council members in the past say, what are the costs associated with this? Cause we want to weigh whether or not, um, that continued investment, um, makes sense for the city. The, um, parade ordinance is written to apply to any parade in Post Falls and not specific to Post Falls Festival. And I would say, as Field said, if, if there's a consideration to want to have additional support for the actual Post Falls Parade, for Post Falls Festival, um, using the nonprofit application to fill out. And the city could then say, we're gonna provide twenty-five hundred or five thousand or whatever that number is towards the parade, um, for support. That would, in my recommendation, that, that would be how I would recommend doing it. Just because of safety concerns and the use of resources here at the city would be to request that support and have the city support it in that way.
We could think of Post Falls Festival like our Winter Fest that we do and like the other things. Okay. Thank you so much.
Yes. Yes.
We need a motion?
We didn't need a motion tonight. It was just for us to take commentary, go back, make updates. Like you said, in, it's in, and I will follow up with another email tomorrow to double check with the Post Falls Community Ambassadors to see if they would like a meeting. But before we bring this back, I think a meeting with them would be beneficial to everyone.
This is listed as an action item, so I'm wondering if we need...
So we did list it as an action item so we could get direction from Council Field, and I went back and forth on that. And he's like, it's really not an action item. But I said, but if they give me some kind of specific direction with the way that the state legislature has written, how our agendas have to be posted, I want to make sure that there's an action on there. But there isn't really a need for you guys to do anything other than kind of tell me what you've told me tonight.
Okay, good. Thanks, Shelley.
Thank you.
Thanks for, good discussion.
And I did have a cute picture for you. I just never made it to that page.
Notice she said that she didn't have a cute picture of me.
I probably have a few of those, one with you with hair.
Yeah. Next item, next item up is new business. God, you're cruel. The first item is a Ross Point Road Cycle Track Professional Services Agreement. Mr. Paulus?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, Robert Paulus, City Engineer. So tonight, staff is asking for your consideration and for your approval of a professional services agreement with J U B Engineers to provide for design services, bid phase services, and then project management for the development and construction of a cycle track on Ross Point Road between Second and Third Avenues. So first of all, what is a cycle track? A cycle track is when we take bicycle lanes instead of being on each side of the roadway, and we combine them into a single bicycle lane on one side of the road. In order to do this, normally it's illegal to bicycle on a road as you face traffic. So what you do is you put up and you define the space between the cycle track and the vehicular traffic. Usually you either do that vertically raising that cycle track higher than the roadway, or you provide something like delineation along the edge of the cycle track, or you use curb and gutter. In our case, we would be utilizing a curb, this is a curb that we put out in front of Walmart. It has been very effective, even though over the past two years, it hasn't had a lot of plow activity up against it, but it is showing a lot of resiliency. It would do the necessary improvement as far as keeping traffic from wanting to drift into the bicycle lane, and then having the delineators at about every 40 feet would give that vertical feel for the cars as well as plow trucks to be able to find it during the wintertime without losing the delineators. Those delineators can run $25 to $50 apiece, so we don't want to lose them, and we want to make sure we design something that they're going to stay around. Second Avenue and Third Avenue, the reason we're doing this section is that several years ago, with the development of the I-90 and Highway 41 interchange, we asked I T D to incorporate a cycle track into the design that they were doing for Ross Point Road. The reason for this was with the change of configuration of State Highway 41, we were going to be putting in a HAWK signal, which is a pedestrian activated traffic light for pedestrian and bicycle traffic to cross the Centennial Trail, across Seltice Way, which is still going to be a busy roadway, and to get onto the Centennial Trail as it moves along Ross Point Road. By keeping the traffic on one side, that improves from what we were seeing, what would be the comfort level and the ability for bicycle traffic on that roadway. I T D was able to incorporate it into their design from Seltice Way down to Third Avenue. They weren't able to go further than that because that was the limit of the federal funding, and to go further would have delayed the rest of the project. So we did not want to go there. Staff's desire to go further and go down to Second Avenue is because we have a horizontal curve in that area. We want to make sure we have good visibility where traffic is going to be crossing from the normal bicycle lane on each side and then having to get over to where it's all in the cycle track. So by moving the vehicular traffic to the east side of the roadway, as you come around that curve, the southbound traffic's going to be further over, and they're going to have a better visibility of that Second and Ross Point intersection where we want the traffic to cross. Long term, we'd like to see how these first couple blocks work, and then there's a desire to eventually have the cycle track work all of its way down to Ponderosa Boulevard and maybe even along Ponderosa Boulevard back to Greens Ferry. That will be something that we'll have to figure out over time as to, you take the first couple blocks, how does it work? What are some of the pros? What are some of the cons? What are things that you can do better before you make the full investment? This is the first cycle track in Post Falls, and there really aren't many in the area either. So something we want to make sure we're very cognizant of the safety and operations on. We took a look at our consultant shortlist. J U B Engineers has been doing some work on some other bicycle and pedestrian projects in the area, and we found them to be the best qualified for this project. We developed a rough scope. We've met with them out in the field and discussed some of the issues out there already. And based upon some of our conversation with them, we've even gone back to I T D, and we've made some modifications in the curb to match what we're looking at for the curb here with what I T D is going to construct later this year. Project Management Services, Bid Phase, Design, all of that comes down to $22,300 for J U B Engineers. We're looking at a staff contingency of $2,000 to allow for us to look at, in case we need to make a few other modifications from what is in the scope of services. This would be funded by the multimodal impact fees. It is a project on the multimodal impact fee list. It's called Ross Point Maplewood to Seltice Way, M M 76. Stand for any questions that you might have of me.
Questions, Rob?
I think this looks great. I love the physical separation. I know we've got places where there's a bike lane, and it's just paint. And I think you'd have to be crazy to drive a bike on there, especially when there's the right turn lane kind of driving across the cycle lane. So this, having it be actually separated, I think is really fantastic.
I, yeah.
I'm with Randy. I actually cycle around the city when the weather's right. And this sounds very appealing, a major improvement to quality of life for people who are using the Centennial Trail and everyone else.
So is this just a paint job and curb? Or we re, we're redoing this whole stretch of road?
We are keeping the road as it is. And we will be basically putting steel dowels into the roadway and then pouring the curb on the roadway, and then there will be reinforcing bar within that curb as well for strength. And then we will be putting down, we'll be changing the road striping pattern in that entire section, and we will also be utilizing something called methyl micromolate paint for the green bicycle lane paint. That is going to have a longer life expectancy than our normal waterborne paints that we use on the roadway. And that should hopefully, what, we don't have a lot of experience with methyl micromolate in the city. Where we have utilized it, we've seen about eight years' worth of life. The most recent application was we put that methyl micromolate on the Fourth and Idaho Roundabout, and that's where we're really starting to get to see an idea of how to plow and sanding operations affect that paint, but it's a little bit too early to really tell. But I do think with the bicycle lanes and lower traffic on it, it should be more maintainable and get longer life out of that paint.
Just a couple more questions. Sorry, this 24 is coming out of what fund?
This is coming out of the multi, multimodal impact fees.
Okay, great. The impact fees, thank you. And then I think it's beautiful, and I think it's lovely and a great idea, but is there like a reason that we need to spend the money to? Is this like a frequently biked section of road?
This is part of the Centennial Trail right now. Historically, it has been an unmarked share the road concept for the Centennial Trail. So people bike in the direction that traffic goes, but there hasn't been marked bike lanes. And when the I-90 Highway 41 interchange came up, this was looked at as a, we could either put bicycle lanes on each side and go with the traditional paint on the roadway, or we could go with something a little bit better. And the Centennial Trail is a higher used, higher class bicycle and pedestrian facility, and we wanted to put something in there which was more appropriate for the use.
Okay, sorry, I, you referenced the Centennial Trail, but I guess I missed that it is actually the Centennial.
It is actually the Centennial Trail.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Any questions, comments?
So, comment, and maybe I should have declared a site visit because I live in this area, and I know it doesn't look like it now, but I used to bike, cycle a lot. And especially when I worked in Coeur d'Alene, I would often cycle to work on the Centennial Trail. And this stretch was always the sketchiest stretch to cycle down. So I think if there's a place where something like this is needed, that's it.
No question.
Is, am I in trouble for saying that, or?
No, it's not a public hearing, and...
I would get lost on the Centennial Trail down there, trying to figure out where it went. So I think it's a great idea. Anyone make a motion?
I would move to approve the Ross Point Road Cycle Track Professional Services Agreement.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Westland?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Sig leader?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Wish to pass, thank you. Rob, thanks for starting out by explaining what a cycle track was. I was trying to figure out why we were putting a bicycle track in town.
Like a racetrack in town.
Next item up is a prairie trail crossing. License to use real property.
Just to finish on cycle tracks, I won't tell you how many months it took for me to finally get it through my head that that was the term and what it meant. Prairie Trail Crossing. Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, again, Robert Paulus, City Engineer. What we're asking for you this evening is to approve and issue a license to use real property to the Post Falls Highway District for the Prairie Trail undercrossing. Back in 2024, just over a year ago, the Post Falls Highway District was able to acquire a carbon grant to construct and, well, design and construct an underpass on Prairie Avenue just west of Meyer Road. They hired J U B Engineers who have been working on that for over a year. The construction plans have been fully reviewed and are ready for approval. One of the last things that is needed before the plans can be approved and the project moved on for obligation of construction funding, which they are hoping to do in 2025 yet, is they need to have a certification of rights of way. Part of that requires them to either acquire the right of way or acquire a license from the city of Post Falls to construct a portion of the trail on lands that the city owns. That's what you see on the screen in blue. Back in 2024, the city of Post Falls had Jacqueline lands as part of an agreement with them in the development of their properties up by Fenix and Prairie to pave the Prairie Trail from Zorros Road, which is a quarter mile east of Highway 41, down to the western edge or the topmost edge of that licensed area. We were holding back to make room for this undercrossing that was to go in. So what this does tonight is this gives the authority and right for Post Falls Highway District to have construction equipment on city land and to pave the trail and do grading that's necessary in the area in blue, so that when it's all done, we have a connected trail. There is no obligation to the city of Post Falls at this time for any financial contributions. Post Falls Highway District does have a match towards the grant monies. I did say at this time with the dollar amount, the reason I mention that is at present, there is a shortfall that the Post Falls Highway District has and what the estimated cost of the project is versus the engineer's estimate. Cooney Metropolitan Planning Organization is working with the state, and city staff has met with Post Falls Highway District and K M P O to discuss some potential options if the rest of the construction funding can't be found. However, that's a completely different story that would be brought back to you if that doesn't resolve itself. But right now, in order to meet construction requirements, we do need to get a license so that the project can get final approvals. Any questions?
Questions, Rob?
Can you please tell me what is going under? The road is going under, or the trail is going under?
The trail is going to go underneath the roadway.
Thank you so much. Okay.
And the cost of the license is nominal, almost nothing, right?
Cost of license doesn't cost anything.
Aside from whatever the soft cost is to draft it, right?
Yeah. Our attorney's cost to write up the license and my involvement in talking with Post Falls Highway District, I've been involved in this project throughout anyway. And again, we get out of it, there's 400 feet of asphalt path that they build for us, and there's a significant amount of dirt moving that they will be doing as well.
I just want to make sure that was clear to anybody that watching that, you know, given the discussion we just had on the lack of funding for the project, that this has no real cost to it at all, what we're voting on tonight.
That is correct.
With that, I would move to approve the Prairie Trail Crossing K N 35398 License to Use Real Property with Post Falls Highway District.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Sig leader?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Westland?
Aye.
Wish to pass this, thank you. Next item up is the Prairie Trail Borrow Pit and Trail Design, Zorros to State Highway 41.
This is still going to be me, Honorable Mayor. Don't have any PowerPoint presentation for you, but I don't think one is necessary for this. What staff is asking is for you to approve a professional services agreement between the city and Welsh Comer and Associates to perform, perform geotechnical analysis and professional engineering services to remediate a borrow pit that exists next to the Prairie Trail alignment between Zorros Road and State Highway 41. Staff went and we solicited services from four different geotechnical and engineering firms. We got draft scopes back from three of those. Out of those, we found that Welsh Comer and Buddinger and Associates was the most qualified based upon their demonstrated knowledge of the city's needs within their scope of services. To proceed with this, it would cost $72,940 is the estimated professional services that covers design, bid management, and construction management services, construction management services on our, on an hourly basis. So that's why there's the estimate in there. We would request approval for up to $80,000. That gives us roughly $8,000 worth of, or closer to $7,000 of contingency in this. Stand for any questions that you might have.
We've discussed it. Discuss, any further questions, Rob?
That's a hole that needs to be filled in, might as well put a trail on it. So I would, I would move to approve the Prairie Trail Borrow Pit and Trail Design, Zorros to South, State Highway 41.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Sig leader?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Westland?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Wish to pass this, thank you. Thanks, Rob. Next item tonight is citizens' issue, and this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding city-related issues that are not on the agenda. If anyone wishes to testify, come forward. And when you get up there, name for the record, please.
I'm Jennifer File, and I live in the area that you guys are all deciding to build out of control. I didn't know, when I bought my house, I looked at the map on the website, and it said I was going to move into a residential district, but now, coming here tonight, I found out I'm living in a technology area. So everything you guys have been talking about is my neighborhood. I'm, I came here tonight to talk to you about what happened at that legislative meeting that that lady was dragged out of. And in Coeur d'Alene, I found out that the city council is actually in charge of the prosecuting area and the police. And so I just wanted to come before the city council to find out what your position is in, like, upholding law and order in our legislative meetings? And like, if somebody goes bananas, in, tonight, everybody's normal. We're all civilized human beings, performing business. But in the event that something goes crazy, what is the city council and, having the mayor here, what is your position on upholding the safety and civility of our common civil meetings? Can you talk to that?
Sure. We have a policy in place. And if, if you've ever been to a meeting, and we can kind of read the crowd, and if I feel that there's a public hearing that's going to be contentious at all, I usually will start by saying that we're here to listen. We're not all going to agree, but we're going to behave ourselves, we're going to adhere to a proper decorum. We're going to not cheer, we're not going to boo, there's not going to be comments from the audience. If people want to address the council, you got to sign up for it, and you've got to come up and state your name and address the council. If someone does not follow, and, and I will say this right now, it's worked wonderfully for us. I mean, we've had several issues where we've had a lot of folks out there that aren't happy about something, and everybody has behaved fine. But we do have a policy that if somebody does start making comments from the audience, we won't allow cheering, we won't allow booing. And if they act up, I will warn them. And if they continue to act up, I will declare a recess. Council will leave, will go to the anteroom. In this case, we, this is our city hall, we do have our police on site. So in that case, it was, you know, questions, who had the jurisdiction, et cetera. So in that case, it was, you know, questions, who had the jurisdiction, et cetera. Here, it is understood, it is our, our city's police department. We would go in to the anteroom during the recess and let the police then deal with whomever it was, trying to just calm the situation down. And like I say, we have not had to do that, because I announce it up front, and people have behaved very well.
Right. I just know that it's going to continue and become worse, because the prosecutor, prosecutor under is not willing to press charges to protect our civil safety. So because we're neighbors, it's going to come this way. It's not going to get better, right? So are you, what, what steps are you willing to take to ensure the safety of your community in city meetings?
Well, as I just said, we, the council will leave.
Right.
We'll go into anteroom, and our, our police
Right.
address it.
You're assuming that people are normal and going to behave. But if they do not behave, then what are your actions?
If they don't behave, then it's a police issue, and there's no question on jurisdiction in this case.
So that would be illegal behavior, and they would be prosecuted by the law.
That would be up to our police department and our, our city prosecutors, yes.
Okay. And so because the prosecutor's answer to the city council, I'm asking the, hearing the mayor's opinion, I appreciate that. But I also am concerned that the city council is enforcing law, and they are asking the prosecutor to pursue criminal charges in a similar situation. That it's up to the prosecutor's answer to the city council. Is that right information I'm getting?
Well, I'm in default. The city council does not direct the prosecutor who to prosecute.
Okay. That's what I was informed. So that's why I was coming here, to try and get that information. So it's up to the prosecutor if they want to pursue charges or not in Post Falls for misconduct in a city meeting.
Correct.
I'm just coming for some information and where you guys are, what your posture is because...
Between our police department and our prosecutor, the police department would take care of the situation. They would then turn it over to our prosecutors, who would then decide if, if there was something to prosecute or not.
And who are they accountable to?
Who are the prosecutors?
The prosecutor, yeah. Because I tried to find some information out about that.
The prosecutors are employed by the City of Post Falls.
Right. So...
So it would be up through the administration, through the legal department, through the city administrator, and up to the mayor and council.
To you.
But we do not direct them on who to prosecute and who not to prosecute.
Right. But if they did not enforce the law, who would be, they would be accountable to? To the mayor?
I'll, I'll direct that to our attorney.
So prosecutors in Idaho have what's called prosecutorial discretion. And so they're, they're kind of the top law enforcement person in deciding whether or not to bring charges. And so they, they are employed by the city, but they exercise their discretion in what cases they prosecute.
So it wouldn't be the council that would, they would be accountable to then? So regardless of what the city council decides, it doesn't matter, they, they work autonomously? Is, the prosecutor works autonomously, is what I hear you saying?
To a certain extent, they exercise their discretion in prosecuting cases on behalf of the state of Idaho.
So if they're, okay, I, I was coming for clarification. So I, I think that that's, is there anything else that any, none, none of the city council weighed in on this?
So I, I do have a question about that, then. So if the prosecutor is employed by the city, are any type of accountability to maybe a disagreement to the prosecutorial discretion would be review of their employment?
Yeah, that would be, it would be reviewed at their employment. Again, they act on behalf of the state of Idaho. And so the, it's, they operate under the, they are employed by the city, but they operate under the Idaho state statute.
So that would be our, that would be our recourse, I guess, if we, if we would choose to renew their employment?
Yes.
And then if somebody goes crazy, are, are they going to be physically removed? Or are they, is the meeting going to be stopped?
Hard, hard to speculate. We will stop the meeting.
Okay.
Like I said, we will declare recess. We will leave the ideas, and we will leave that up to our police department.
Right.
I guess as a further, further council comment, so, you know, we're all very part-time up here.
Right.
So, you know, we got the parks director there. We don't, we don't tell him how to mow the lawns in the parks and that sort of thing. We don't tell him how to set up the, the swing sets or anything else. That's, that's, we provide the, we pass the budgets that fund those activities. It's the same thing with the police force. They, we pass the budgets that fund those activities. They have, you know, the city ordinances, state ordinances, county ordinances, everything else that they have sworn to uphold. So we don't direct that on a case-to-case basis. And they're the experts, not us. And so, in the case where somebody's going bonkers, then, as the mayor said, we would leave and let the police do their job, essentially. And, and that's about the best we can do until such point as something is so egregious, and as was, as was mentioned, that could come up in renewal of employment or something like that. But we don't get involved in day-to-day personnel decisions or issues.
I don't feel safe coming to meetings, knowing that something like that could happen. So that's why I came here tonight, to find out what level of safety we have to participate in our community politics.
We always have at least one officer here. And if there's something that comes up where it could be potentially contentious, we will have a second. And we've had times where I've seen three and four officers here. So we do follow, follow what the agenda, or pay attention to what the agenda is comprised of. And if need be, there will be additional law enforcement personnel.
I appreciate you sharing that with me. I am sharing this all, information for, to other people as well. It's not just for me. It's for a group of people that are concerned. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And I really appreciate you guys, praying for you, really care that you're showing up on a weeknight to do this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item up is administrator staff reports.
We have none tonight, sir.
Followed by mayor, council, and, mayor and council comments. And tonight, I have none. How about council? No? We do not need another executive session.
We do not.
So the next motion is?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You in the jury?